Yeah, that car line is unbearable.
I'll tell you all this about us on Monday, Tuesday, because it was a wreck on Suncoast between 50 and 52. The traffic would be, people that didn't go that way because of the wreck, people would back up from Starkey all the way to the river. Just without school. People were going along Starkey to work for dinner. That wasn't the sign that could take Ridge Road to?
Yeah.
It took me thirty, took me thirty minutes to get back to my office.
So am I. It's gonna be great.
Are they gonna punch it through the vex at the same time they open into forty-one?
And it was twenty-six, I think, for at least two lanes.
Two lanes, whatever.
Two lanes.
Doesn't it continue on?
Both directions.
It connects to Sunlake now.
Going to fifty-two, but isn't it gonna connect right there where the intersection, where it stops now?
Right after.
You could turn, it looks like they're working.
Oh, you got Sunlake.
Sunlake.
Yeah, that's supposed to connect.
To do his chapters.
On the north side.
Concord Station.
And Patty, have an issue?
It's not under construction, it's working. Right where he broke down. It's not under construction.
It's only should all.
Well, a part of it, but not to get it all the way to fifty-four. If the goal in there, it's a priority case.
But it's not gonna open the same time as Ridge.
No, no, it's not.
Do you wanna open? Miss, you can have whatever you want. I have my opening. I wasn't sure if it was gonna be handed.
Just open it to the box before we need discussions in chapters.
I recognize Hyatt today.
Okay.
I would recommend our agenda.
Okay, sounds good. Patty, open it. It's open? Conserves play against Works Partners.
Terry, you ready?
Yes, sir.
You'd like to call the meeting to order? We could stand for a moment of silence and the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, local planning agency. It's Thursday morning, and a special session of the Planning Commission slash Local Planning Agency, today we're meeting on...
Excuse me one second, what's?
The vote call.
Yes, okay.
Ah, yes.
See, we're so anxious here.
Yeah, I know, we just took right into it. Sorry.
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Christopher Paul.
Here.
John Moody.
Here.
Matthew Muntz. Derek Conklin.
Here.
Chris Williams, represented by Richardson House.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here, enroll call please. I mean, the approval of publication?
There's...
Oh, this is the, okay, yeah, that's right. And there's no minutes, right, so, okay. I think we're good to go.
Thank you again. As I said earlier, special session on Thursday morning, a return to the Local Planning Agency workshops on the Pasco 2050 Comprehensive Plan update. Today, we're gonna talk about the chapters that were presented in August and in early September. We're going to be presenting to you the changes that were made based on the discussion that occurred at those workshops at that time. And so today, we're going to speak specifically on the following chapters. On Pasco Conserves, which is the conservation element, Pasco Plays, which is the recreation element, Pasco Adapts, which is the sustainability portion of the comprehensive plan and the coastal parts of it. And also Pasco Works, which is the economic development component of the comprehensive plan. And lastly, Pasco Partners. At a future workshop, we will be bringing forward the other chapters that have yet to be discussed by the Planning Commission or Local Planning Agency. So those will be coming up in upcoming workshops soon. But today is a overview of the changes that occurred since the last workshop sessions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Hyatt, who will give us a presentation, and we'll begin the walkthrough of the changes.
Thank you, Terry.
Hyatt, before you start, I just have one question. I assume we're working off of the version that you emailed on Sunday, November 2nd? I just wanna get that clarification, because Patty emailed an agenda that had links last night, that appeared to be an older version of the comp plan. I just wanna make sure we're not using those.
We're not using those. The links that Patty sends are actually to the project documents on our website. And there is a section in our website where it says post-LPA workshop, and that section has the draft that you received on eleven-two. So we are gonna be reviewing the draft that I sent you on eleven-two, not the ones that are on the agenda.
Okay.
From Patty.
Alright.
Okay. Okay, good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
I'm Azili, planning, development, economic growth. It's great to see you all. It's been about two months since we last met, so I hope you did not miss too much Pasco 2050 and the words, goals, objectives, and policies. So before we jump into today's update, I want to take a quick moment to step back to remind us all of the big picture.
Okay.
Do you remember this slide?
We do.
Awesome. That was your pop quiz for the day, so you all passed with flying colors. So these are the eleven chapters that make up the Pasco 2050 Comprehensive Plan. Each one focuses on a key topic that shapes how our county will continue to grow, move, live, and thrive in decades ahead. Now, since our last workshop, we have been busy revising the chapters that we discussed based on the feedback that you all shared with us. Today, we will be revisiting Pasco Adapts, which we brought to you on August 27th. Pasco Conserves, we were, we presented it to you on August 21st. Pasco Plays, presented on August 7th. And the Pasco Works, presented on September 4th. It was the last one that we did. And we also talked about Pasco Partners, which was presented on August 27th as well. Now, each of these chapters have been, or has been updated to reflect your comments, particularly within the goals, objectives, and policies. Now, we also have Works on Pasco Lives, which was presented on August 7th, but we are not bringing that one today, as we will still, we're still working on... We still have few outstanding comments that we are working on with the county attorney's office, so we will bring that chapter back to you once it's ready. For today's discussion, you should have received, like I just mentioned to Mr. Goldstein, two versions of each chapter, the clean version and the strike-through version, as well as a tracker that summarizes your comments and the edits made. So just a reminder, the clean version is the same version that we presented at the last workshops, but now it reflects the edits made based on your comments. We wanna make sure that it's easier for you to review your comments or your feedback. So as we go through each chapter, Patty will be pulling up the clean version on the screen, and I will point out the key edits that were made. Hopefully, you had the chance to review the materials ahead of today's meeting. Shout out to Derek for opening the link a little bit earlier. Thank you. But if you haven't, no worries, we will go through it together, and I hope that it will be a light lift. And of course, we welcome any additional thoughts or input along the way. Without further ado, let's get started with Chapter Seven, which is Pasco Conserves. Okay, so first things first, we removed the word insure from all of the chapters where it showed, or it seemed like it was too regulatory. So we took that comment and we applied it to all the chapters that we haven't yet to bring to you. But we did remove insure from Pasco Conserves and the chapters that we will be revising today. So the first things that also, that we also did, that we removed the agriculture reserve from the APU map and from the policies throughout the document. And that was based on the discussion that we had. Patty, if you would scroll, please. First policy was 112, natural areas and green open space connections to natural resources. The recommendation was to move it to Pasco Grows. And remove it from the conservation element, or the Pasco Conserves chapter. So we did just that.
I'm gonna jump in here and just mention that at the last, Nick Taro's Peoples' Plan, at the last workshop where we talked about Pasco Conserves, around the former Conserves policy 112, which has now been removed from the chapter, was a discussion about open space and what open space means, with the definition of that. And there was a lengthy dialogue regarding the open space idea for Pasco County. So there is, there was in your material, a definition, a proposed definition for open space that we could be using in Pasco Grows. We did wanna talk about that today, but we're gonna save that discussion towards the end of the Conserves chapter, so we'll skip that for right now, and then go through the other policies, and then we'll revisit the open space piece.
Okay, thanks, Terry.
Do you gentlemen like the format of going through each policy in each edit, or you just wanna point out the edits that were not necessarily reflecting your comments, feedback? I can keep going, it's just however you wanna.
Any preference from anybody up here?
I thought she was doing fine.
Yeah? Yeah, good.
Great, thank you, Mr. Moody. Okay, so the second policy was 112, protection of listed species. LPA comment was to remove the last sentence about management or mitigation plans, which was a new proposed language. It was an existing language in the comp plan anyway, so we did, we did that. And you will notice that the numbering has changed because we removed that first policy. I intentionally left number 111 just so we can follow along, but the numbering in the strike-through version has shifted up since we removed the first policy. Okay, Policy 113, manatee protection. The comment was to remove last sentence about the guidelines being specified in development conditions and in permit. So we removed that, and that was existing language from the 2025 comp plan. There were also a couple edits that were not necessarily discussed during our workshops, and it was just minor editorial edits that, when we went back to the document, we noticed that we needed to change. I did point them out in the tracker, but it wasn't anything that does not have LPA comments filled out. It was just something that was editorial, not necessarily a huge change in the language. Okay, 1.5.2, wetland delineation. We removed the last two sentences from the policy per your feedback.
That's 1.5.2?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Mr. Girardi, you said something?
No, I just, I was just waiting on Patty.
Okay. Mr. Moody, you good?
Yeah.
Good. Is it great? Okay, Policy Conserves 1.5.3, wetland impact and mitigation. The comment from you gentlemen was...
Hold on one sec, Hyatt, I'm sorry. Go back to 1.5.2 for a second.
Okay, wetland delineation.
What did, what did you say you did there?
Remove the last two sentences from the policy. So Pasco County will...
We struck out that Pasco County will honor a formal delineation survey of wetlands by Swiftmont?
We removed that. We just referred to the LDC instead.
Because it's covered in LDC.
And the LDC says that.
Correct. Okay, 1.5.3, wetland impact and mitigation. You asked us to reward, shall regulate, so Pasco County should not duplicate. And also, you mentioned should not duplicate, that Pasco County should not be duplicating the state and federal regulation of CAT 1 wetlands. So we made those edits, we replaced, shall regulate, we continue to implement regulation through LDC, again, deferring it to the LDC. And we also did a couple versions of policies. Policy, we took language from Policy Conserves 1.5.5 and added it to 1.5.3, because it pretty much was saying the same thing. And we removed the definition, we removed direct impact from the policy and added that definition to the glossary instead. Oh, and removed language about protection and preservation of CAT 1 wetlands per your feedback. Yes, if you go all the way to the glossary, all the way to the end of the page, or the end of the document. I'm sorry, before the lamps. Right up one more page? Right there. So that's the direct impact policy, I mean, definition. You want to read it? Okay. Okay, direct impact, impact to wetland and surface waters, including but not limited to the removal, alteration, encroachment, dredging, filling, grading, clearing of native trees or vegetation. Creation of human-made beaches along shorelines, or other changes to the natural location, functions, I'm sorry, to the natural functions hydro period or water quality within wetlands. How do we feel about this definition?
Comments?
Yeah, it looks fine. It's, I don't know how that's, how, is that different from the previous definition, or that didn't exist at all?
No, it didn't exist. It's a brand new...
It's just defining direct impact.
Mm-hmm.
But the impacts are being regulated through the land development code, not the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
All right.
Is it definition generally, I'm trying to find Swift Month. How did you come up with that definition?
I will defer that to our friends at Natural Resources.
Okay, I figured Jackie would have that.
Good afternoon or good morning, Jackie Jordan, Natural Resources. So most of that definition just came directly from the language that was already in the comp plan and that's in the LDC. And then we just added a couple more items, like clearing the native vegetation. Just so it's clear, those things are included in direct impacts as well.
Okay.
I see we're still defining the difference between category one, category two, category three.
The difference being though that the comprehensive plan is not specifying any limitations in develop, for development of category one, two, or three wetlands that would be implemented through the land development code, which then potentially opens the door in the land development code for, right now there are limitations on category one wetlands in the land development code. So that could be amended, whereas when it's in the comp plan, then it's not possible to amend.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to strike all this stuff out of here in the first place. All right, Hyatt.
Thank you. Okay, so the next policy is 1.5.5. Like I mentioned, we included the language from that policy into policy 1.5.3. We deleted wetland mitigation, but we did not want to completely remove that mitigation language. Hence why we just added that we will continue to implement the regulations of wetland mitigation through the LDC. In 1.5.3, yes. So 1.5.5, if you scroll down Patty, that one, up. Yep, that one was completely struck because all that language is already in the LDC.
But could be changed because it's being eliminated from the comp plan?
Correct, yeah.
It's easier to amend.
Next one is 1.5. Do we have any other comments about this policy or we can, okay. 1.5.6, the minimum use of property. We deleted it since it's already in the LDC.
So those two policies just essentially become reserved? There's nothing underneath those two policies currently?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I mean, they're not reserved in the strike through. So policy 1.5.7 becomes 1.5.6.
Okay, so it is gonna, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that 1.5.7 will become 1.5.5.
Yes. 1.5.9, wetlands, upland buffers. You mentioned that this is a regulatory language and it should be deferred to the LDC. So we changed the language to reference the LDC. And we also added surface water, which came from conserves 1.5.10 since we deleted that policy as well. So you noticed that we have done a couple version of policies that pretty much said the same thing.
Hyatt, on this one, can you just check the grammar again? Because like the title says waters, policy says water. And then I'm not sure if the policy should say buffer instead of buffers.
So, so we had wetlands and surface waters, but the direction from our county attorney is to remove the S's from wetlands and surface waters.
Well, it's, but they're not consistent is my point. I don't know which is right, but they're not consistent.
We can remove the plural from. Yeah, from the title.
But there's, I was gonna make another comment about this though, because you, earlier in the, in the chapter, somebody defined wetlands and surface waters as collectively defined those two terms as wetlands?
Correct.
And so I wasn't sure if there was an intent every time you use the phrases wetlands and surface waters to mean wet, like, I'm not sure if you were gonna replace all those references to just be wetlands.
That's correct. The only reason we left surface waters in here is since we moved that from the surface water setback section. So we wanted just to be clear that we're combining these. So we just spelled it out again, just for this policy specifically. But throughout the document, it just references wetlands.
Okay. All right. Okay, if you can just clean up the language in 1.5.9.
Will do. Okay, 1.6, groundwater protection and water quality. So we added last sentence, as you see on there, while supporting stormwater management and flood mitigation functions. And that came from Public Works Department. They want us to emphasize the synergies between enhancing groundwater recharge, surface water, and stormwater management functions. Are we okay with that edit? I'm only asking because it wasn't something that was discussed at the last workshop. So I wanted to make sure that we're all good. 1.6.1, protection of flood plains. You asked us to remove such protection shall include but not limited to prohibiting new development which would have adverse impacts upon the 100-year flood plain without mitigation other than for roadways providing access across the 100-year flood plain. Mr. Goldstein said that this may be inconsistent with the LDC and Mr. Moody said that it's, it could be also consistent with the Swift Month regulations. So the Public Works Department recommended that, recommended the deletion of the roadway exception but not the beginning of that sentence as it increases flood plain protection. So if you scroll down Patty, I'm sorry, go back up. Yeah, so the, the beginning of the sentence, they want us to keep in there. And we did check the LDC for any inconsistencies and we didn't find anything.
So I'm, I'm not clear what you're recommending to change in that policy.
So they want us, the, the Public Works Department are recommending to delete the exception for roadways. So what it says, other than for roadways providing access across the 100-year flood plain. They want us to stop exactly at mitigation.
Was there something before that? Because there's, it's like there's a comma period. Is there?
The last version had mitigation struck and it said compensatory storage instead of mitigation.
Right.
So we're just going back to mitigation?
Correct. So whatever that new language that we had added in the previous policy, you had asked us to delete anyway. But Public Works is asking us to delete the exception, the roadway exception.
So you don't have it struck through here yet?
No, no, because we wanted to make sure that we can discuss.
Yeah, so they're looking to delete the entire last sentence, starting at such protection?
No, I think.
So, so your recommendation.
They're asking to delete other than for roadways.
Right, your recommendation was to strike the entire last sentence. That starts such protection all the way down to flood plain. Public Works recommends to keep that such protection shall include to the end, all the way until without mitigation. But they recommended, they were okay with, they were not okay with deleting the roadway exception. I'm sorry, they were okay, yes. I need my coffee.
So that last part is other than roadways for providing access across 100-year flood plain? That's gonna be struck?
Per Public Works, yes. And their reasoning is they want to increase that flood plain protections.
Unless you mitigate.
Sorry?
It still allows you to impact it, but you have to mitigate.
Correct.
So you can still build roadways across 100-year flood plain with mitigation?
What's the purpose of that sentence? I mean, it really just gives an example, but says not limited to. So I mean, why is that even in there?
That's kind of where I was at. I was like, why don't you just strike the whole sentence?
The whole sentence.
Does the LDC already have this requirement anyway? I don't have, it's a question, not a comment. I'm just a question.
Yes, it's in 1104 flood damage prevention.
Correct.
Yeah, so we're referring to the LDC everywhere else in here, so we're not there as well.
And I don't know. What was, what was their reasoning for why they needed it in the comp plan if it's already in the land development code?
Just increased protection?
Well, we've had this conversation about other provisions of the comp plan, which maybe they're not privy to about regulating through the comp plan versus the land development code.
Yeah, I agree with you. Jamie, I think probably should strike the last sentence.
I just confirm with the Public Works Director. They're okay with that sentence coming out from such protection shall include all the way to the end.
Okay. Okay, so the end result is we're deleting from such protection all over the, okay.
Just as you recommended. 1.6.2, Ms. Patty? Okay. So use of wetlands for water quality improvement. Public Works Department is proposing to delete this policy in order to limit the use of wetlands as a tool to remove nutrients from stormwater. And this is consistent with state and federal requirements in the county's NPDS MS4 permit. His planning commission okay with the deletion of this policy?
Can you repeat that again, Hyatt, what their objective is?
So they, they're proposing to delete this policy in order to limit the use of wetlands as a tool to remove nutrients from stormwater.
So I'm confused, how does eliminating the policy stop one from using wetland or removing nutrients from stormwater?
And Mr. Mickel is with us today to provide an answer. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the commission. I'm Jason Mickel, Public Works Director. Nice to meet you all. Good to be here this morning. Great discussion. And many of the comments that we made, the peer that you're, that you're reviewing this morning. We appreciate your discussion on those. This one in particular. We are intent here, and I, I understand why there's some confusion is what we're trying to say here. The intent is to not use high-quality wetlands as a tool to treat untreated stormwater. That's what we were trying to say here. Maybe it's not coming across that way by deleting the entire provision.
Right, the question that I have is, right, you're just deleting the policy so it doesn't create a prohibition. It just means that the comp plan stays silent with regard to the use of wetlands for stormwater quality improvement. I get your point.
Yeah.
The, the state, the district, and the DEP allow the use of isolated wetlands for stormwater quality treatment. I think you're getting at the larger wetland systems. But I'm not sure that just deleting that achieves your objective. I'm not opposed to you.
Yeah, I guess why, why wasn't it reworded, the state shall not allow high-quality wetlands to be used for that purpose?
You should create the prohibition as opposed to removing.
Yeah, why wasn't it reworded as a prohibition?
Yeah, I think there's an unintended consequence here, potentially. We, we were trying to avoid that from happening. By deleting it, it could actually create that. So we certainly would provide different wording if that would, if that could help. You know, what our intent was here was to not, to, to try to eliminate untreated stormwater from going into a high-quality wetland.
Would it be appropriate to say something? Let me just ask the question first. Does Public Works object to using isolated wetlands in accordance with the state's regulations to treat nutrients in stormwater?
No, we're, we're in concert and appreciate the state regulatory components, whether it's ERP or any other, any other regulations, even at the local level. So, you know, we don't want to do anything different than what's already, what's already regulated.
Yeah, staying away from high-quality wetlands is, that's, that's what defines a high-quality wetland.
Right, I'm just, what I'm getting is nebulous. What I'm trying to do is come at it from the other side, that we would allow the use of wetlands for water quality improvement only in accordance with the state's regulations?
I'm trying to figure how that's different than how it's worded right now.
I actually would agree with that.
It's true, yeah.
I, I think you should just leave it. I don't, I'm not sure I see the harm in leaving it based on what your, the objective you're expressing is. Because the, the rules in Chapter 62 wouldn't allow us to use a category one wetland system as a means of water quality treatment. The DEP's rules would only allow us to use the wetlands that we categorize as CAT 3 wetlands.
I mean, to make it clear, could we just add category three before the, we used to put before wetlands in the policy?
I would think John's comment of putting isolated wetlands in there would be.
Or isolated or whatever. I mean, just if that's the concern.
Again, it's defined by Chapter 62, so.
Because everybody has the word only in it. So if you say only allow it for the use of that type of wetlands.
Hi, my name is Dr. Anthony Malardis. I'm here from Public Works. Our intent behind this is to, this policy's been used as a crutch to, to discharge unmitigated, untreated water into wetlands. We would like to protect wetlands, isolated or unisolated.
Can you give an example of that? Where it's been used as a crutch to discharge untreated water into wetlands? It hasn't been in my career. Because I'm not getting a permit from the state or the federal government to do that.
I can, I can come back with a specific example, but I'm not prepared for that right now.
Is that, that's not just, that's not category one quality wetlands? So you're referring to, again, more isolated wetlands?
I think, I think where you guys were headed with a slight tweak to the language, I think we'd be comfortable with, with the, I think where David was headed, maybe with a tweak to the language would be, would be appropriate. Again, my, our intent of a department, as a department, was to focus on generally those CAT 1 wetlands and then using untreated stormwater to discharge untreated stormwater into a wetland as a way to, as a first line of defense, first line of treatment. I think that's where, that's where our head was.
It sounds like your intent was to be slightly more restrictive than the FDIP. That's what I'm reading.
Well, I mean, our, our comp plan and code do provide a greater level of protection to category one wetlands, notwithstanding certain reservations about that. I mean, they do. So it seems to me that it would be appropriate to limit this use to category two or three. I mean, if that's.
Yeah, I guess that's the question is do, are we being as restrictive or more restrictive than FDIP?
Can I, just playing devil's advocate for a moment, give an example where this, they might want to rethink this? So there's. In waste, one, this policy doesn't specifically call out stormwater. You can think of examples whereby discharge from wastewater treatment plants is routed through weight wetlands, large flowing wetland systems to remove excess nitrogen and phosphorus from the wastewater effluent. So there may be some. So, there may be some advantage to allowing the wetlands. I'm thinking, don't we even have a project like that up there in the 4G ranch today that does that? And I'm thinking about how they treat the wastewater over in the Disney area, the Reedy Creek Improvement District, they do the same thing. And there might be other opportunities where we'd want to pursue that kind of strategy. Whereas this, what you're proposing might foreclose that opportunity from you.
But you could change water.
I get what you're saying.
You could change water to storm water.
Yeah, I think they're going to come up with some language for the policy to better elaborate on what their intent is.
I guess the question is if you put category 2 and 3 before wetlands and put storm water, change water to storm water, would that address the concern?
I think, I think in that case, it gets to the intent, what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, I think you're, I think what you're trying to say is that you don't want the discharge of untreated storm water into certain types of wetland systems. But I think you could, the language should be crafted around exactly what you're trying to limit. I'm not opposed to what you're trying to limit, I get it. But I'm not sure that this policy says it or the deletion of it.
I think even for category 2 and 3, I think they still have, it still has to be in compliance with Chapter 62. The language still requires that. But if you go with the edits I suggested, you wouldn't be able to do it for a Cat 1 wetland at all.
Yeah, but I think some of those flowing wetland systems, for instance, and I mentioned the wastewater treatment example, would be Cat 1 wetlands.
Well, that's why I suggest you change it to storm water. If that's what they're trying to go after, storm water.
So, in an effort to not be debating this for 30 minutes, if Keith Wiley, Director, Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources, if you can let me and my team work with Jason, we'll come back with just this one section revised to capture the intent that Mr. Moody, I think, is alluding to. So, if we can have that courtesy, much appreciated.
Again, just for clarification, why are we trying to be more stringent than the state? Did I miss that?
I don't know if that's ultimately the intent, but I think the intent of the existing comp plan language was always to protect those regionally significant high-quality systems. So, we're just, I think, you know, speak for Jason's team, but I think that was the goal, so. And then defer everything else to the state ultimately. So, but we will come back with a revision on this policy specifically.
Any objection? Circle that?
Jason, you might want to come back up here again. Okay, policy 1.6.4, water quality. Public Works Department recommends that we add wetland habitat to increase specificity and inclusion of wetlands in the preservation of water quality.
1.6.3, all right?
Yes, sorry, I said 1.6.
You have 1.6.4 in your revision here.
Right, sorry.
Excel spreadsheet.
Are we okay with that addition of wetlands habitat?
I don't hear any objection. Go ahead.
Thank you. 1.6.7 groundwater protection in and suitable soils. So, this policy, we had a long discussion about it. And we, the discussion was mainly about language that we had added. We proposed as brand-new language or brand-new edits. So, which, those edits made that policy regulatory. So, based on your comments, we just reverted to the existing policy language that we have right now in the 2025 comp plan. And that's 1.6.6 groundwater protection in unsuitable soils. So, the policy would just start with those developments instead of Pasco County prohibiting.
So, the language is kind of funky by the.
As it is.
Those developments which include septic tanks, buildings, and/or public utilities in or on soils that are unsuitable for such uses shall be designed in accordance with state. So, it's basically saying it's unsuitable, but go ahead and design it according with state regulations. It just, it reads funny.
We're pretty much just deferring it to the state and federal regulations without us, without the county prohibiting it.
Should it say normally unsuitable for such use or? If it was unsuitable, then you can't build on it.
Well, I think this policy is probably talking about those properties that already exist.
Those conditions can be mitigated.
Right.
Yeah, so for instance, I can dig out muck and I can put in ground and sand, which is completely acceptable for construction of a utility or septic system. So, what you're, but I think what you're saying is that you want to specify that it's normally unsuitable.
Yeah, that's, that's just the way I'm reading it.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
The intent probably was, did it normally unsuitable. I don't think there's any harm in putting the word normally before unsuitable.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good idea. It makes it clearer. Because when you say it's unsuitable, that means it's unsuitable.
It's unsuitable, yeah, but why are you building on it all?
So, Hyatt, can you put the word normally before unsuitable?
Normal.
Normally before unsuitable on that.
Next.
Okay. Next is the establishment of aquifer recharge provisions. I want to say the policy numbers, I want to make sure that I got it correct. 1.6, it should be either 1.6.12 or 1.6.13. Oh, I had it correct on my tracker, there you go. You, Mr. Mounds, you had asked us to define high aquifer recharge areas. So, we added that to the glossary, and it is the FDEP definition. Would you like to see that definition?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that map, was that what you?
Yeah, if it's FDEP, that makes sense.
High aquifer, there you go. So, high aquifer recharge areas are locations where significant amounts of surface water rapidly seeps into the ground to replenish, to replenish the underground Floridian aquifer system. High recharge areas are highly vulnerable to contamination from surface-level activities because in these areas, the upper floor of the aquifer is near the land surface and has no thick impermeable confining layers of clay to act as natural filter. This is directly from FDEP.
All right.
Okay. 1.6.18 reduce nutrients loads in surface waters. You asked us to replace, Mr. Moody, asked us to replace Wikiwachi Basin Management Action Plan with adopted Basin Management Action Plans. We did do just that, and we just rewarded the policy a little bit better to be clear.
Hyatt, you have a typo in your title for that one?
Oh, no.
Nutrient.
Nutri.
Oh, okay.
Nutrient.
Okay. Make sure to change that.
No regrets.
No regrets. You know, Words needs to change their editing because if you have it in caps, it does not recognize the spelling. So, I'll complain to Words. I'm complaining to MS Words.
More offended.
For not catching that mistake. Okay.
So, one second. So, asking the engineers on the dais here that are more qualified than I am, is any new regulations coming out there in effect on December 28? Is there any effect on any of this language that's in here? Just thinking ahead.
There's a new state regulation, you mean?
Yeah.
I see them as separate issues.
Okay. Okay.
What this is doing is stating our objective to comply with the goals and objectives of the adopted basin management plan, separate and apart. We would still be implementing all of the current state storm water rules.
Okay.
And those rules would still apply in the adopted basin management action plans that the BMAP adds additional requirements above and beyond just the standard state rules.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay, thank you. We are getting towards the end of conserves. 1.8.2, you had asked us to just remove the word coordinate. So, we did that, and we just rewarded the policy for clarity. And 1.8.4 existing artificial reefs, this was not something that we discussed last time, but we just wanted to make sure to clarify what kind of permits and whose permits. So, we just added that the permits that are issued to the county. And Patty will scroll down one more page to show that policy. It's okay. Up one more, right there. So, we just added that the permits are issued to the county.
Wait, can I? So, we need a permit to monitor our reefs?
Yes. If there's any monitoring.
I mean, I could see why we would need a permit to do work on the reefs. Why do we need a permit just to monitor them?
We actually need a permit to install, and then the permit conditions require that you monitor. That's effectively. So, you can't just go dump material out in sovereign lands without an actual appropriate permit. The permit requires all the necessary monitoring.
So, would it be, so maybe if you eliminated the word by and substituted in accordance with?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, this makes it sound.
Or permitting requirements or something along those lines.
Consistent with the permits issued to the county or something like that?
I think that would, that's appropriate, yeah.
Hyatt, can you change the by to, change the word by to say consistent with the permits issued to the county?
Sure. All right, like I mentioned earlier, we had removed all the references to agricultural reserves from this document, and we also updated the APU map to remove where we had pointed out to the agricultural reserve. And Patty, if you would please scroll down to the map, the Ecological Planning Unit map, to show that it's no longer. Go, one more, one more down. Right there, up, up, you were, right there. So, this is just showing the APUs, no agricultural reserve areas. Okay.
And so, you added three definitions and took out two. So, you added the direct impacts, environmentally sensitive, and the high aquifer recharge areas we talked about.
Yes.
And then two definitions came out, agricultural reserve and natural areas.
Agribas. Okay, next, we are going to discuss the proposed open space definition.
All right. It's a document switch.
So, while they, it looks like they're getting close to putting it up on the screen. So, for the, in the interest of time, we'll do the quick introduction of the open space definition. So, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, there was a lengthy dialogue about what is open space at the August workshop. And at that workshop, we read the existing definition that's in the comprehensive plan. It was a fairly lengthy one with a lot of, it was trying to cover a lot of ground. Pun intended. It was trying to cover a lot of ground, all in one go, and it was hard to follow and understand. And so, but the key thing that we understood from that definition was that it was broken up into three particular components. It was trying to address open space in an urban context. It was trying to address open space in a suburban and then also in a rural context. And in the meantime, it was trying to spread the entire idea of what open space is in terms of natural areas across all three contexts. So, lengthy dialogue, the LPA requested that staff go back and take a look at that and try to develop a definition. So, working with Parks, Recreation, and Natural Resources, the County Attorney's Office, and other stakeholders, planning development, economic growth, came up with the proposed open space definition, which would fit into the glossary of the comprehensive plan and thus inform how various open space policies, like the one we talked about moving to grows, would be understood in the Pasco grows chapter. So, in the new open space definition, we provide the general understanding of what open space is, and then we break it down into the three contexts in a little more clear format as compared to what's currently in the comprehensive plan. So, I'll go ahead, since it's a new, a new idea here, we'll go ahead and read it. There we go. Open space refers to land and/or water areas that are intentionally preserved, restored, or designed to provide recreational, ecological, aesthetic, or social value, and are intended to remain largely free from intensive structural development. The form, function, and design of open space are context-sensitive. Specific requirements for open space shall be regulated by the Land Development Code. Number one, in the urban context, open space is integrated into the built environment to enhance walkability, support social interaction, improve environmental quality. Urban open spaces may include but are not limited to public plazas, courtyards, rooftop gardens, community gardens, community gathering areas, linear green corridors, and stormwater-integrated landscapes. Urban open spaces may incorporate green infrastructure, public art, and the pedestrian amenities of compact, walkable environments. In the suburban context, open space refers to landscaped or managed areas that connect neighborhoods, recreation areas, and natural systems, and that provide recreation or visual relief from developments. Suburban open spaces may include but are not limited to parks, playgrounds, trails, community gardens, stormwater-integrated landscapes, greenways, and preserve natural areas that provide both active and passive recreation while maintaining visual relief and ecological function. In the rural context, open space refers to large tracts of undeveloped or lightly managed land that support natural systems, agricultural uses, and scenic character. It emphasizes passive use and resource protection, which may include but is not limited to conservation lands, farms, forests, wetlands, preserved natural areas, and nature-based recreation areas. And then, as noted earlier, the natural areas context is kind of spread across the existing definition. Here, we break it into a fourth component. Open space refers to land and/or surface waters preserved in a natural state to protect environmentally sensitive resources, which may include but is not limited to wildlife habitats, native vegetation communities, wetlands, floodplains, lakes, springs, marshes, coastal areas, and aquifer recharge areas. Development in these areas is limited to uses that support conservation, education, or passive recreation consistent with environmental protection policies and regulations. So, that's the new sort of proposed definition. Bringing it back here for additional dialogue and refining.
Can I add to Terry's comments? So, this is very much a thousand-foot definition. I want to put this in context because I asked staff a series of questions because there's things that are not covered by this definition. So, I'll give you an example, like, is a setback open? So I'll give you an example, like, is a setback open space? You know, is, is a solar farm open space in a rural context? Is a landscaped parking lot open space? I asked a series of questions and that aren't necessarily answered by this definition. And I got some answers, but ultimately, I think those are going to be answered by the Land Development Code when we get to remember that we don't have a regulatory requirement for open space today, except for neighborhood parks, that's the only real regulatory requirement we have. So until we implement an actual open space regulatory requirement, those details don't exist. So that level of detail where you deal with, you know, does a setback count as open space? Or is a solar farm count as open space? We will deal with those things in the Land Development Code. This is just sort of setting a high-level policy of what, that we want to make it context-specific and that we'll deal with the details in the Land Development Code when we actually implement an open space requirement.
Which will then make those details easier to amend?
Yes.
If need be.
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Anything else, Terry?
If there's nothing on the open space definition, we'll run with it, go jogging or something with it. Sorry.
I mean, David gave his steel of approval, so what else can we have to say?
Okay. Well, this will be part of the Pasco County, or Pasco 2050 Comprehensive Plan glossary. And then we'll pick up the discussion on open spaces once more in the Pasco grows chapter.
But as a preview, I think all grows is going to say that we're going to look to establish an open space requirement in the Land Development Code. The details will be in the Land Development Code.
Essentially, yes.
The friction before was that the language and for every section it was in was requiring open space when we didn't have a definition of what exactly that. It was when we were, the friction was that there was regulated, appeared to be regulated through the comp plan. This is clear that it'll be regulated through the Land Development Code, which is fine.
Easiest discussion so far. It's great.
A lot easier the second time, huh?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Now let's play in the open space. Which chapter plays?
Nice segue.
Set a parking lot.
We actually had fun with this chapter when we were discussing it. And fun in the sense that we agreed on a lot of those edits. So let's start with policy plays 1.1.4. You had asked us to delete that policy. And we did just that. The requirement for median level of service for county parks. Next policy is 1.1.5 Neighborhood Parks. You asked us to remove the reference of the NIRA park accessibility of one mile and five mile radius. And we removed that as well. Keep going.
Keep going.
Okay. Pasco plays 1.1.6 Requirements for adequate land for neighborhood parks. You asked us to add consider amending the LDC and deleting the requirements for constructing and maintaining neighborhood for 25 units or more. So we did revise that language to reflect your feedback. And we just clarified the language a little bit better. Policy plays 1.1.8 Parks deficiency in urban areas.
So I'm sorry, 1.1.6, that will then apply to any number of developments. They don't have to be at 25.
Well, I think the intent was just they would deal with it in the LDC.
Correct.
Give us the number by the LDC as opposed to the comp plan.
Correct. 1.1.8 Parks deficiency in urban areas, you had asked us to delete the word green spaces from the policy. And we did that.
Okay.
One objective plays 1.5 and policy plays 1.5.1, speak to common open space and preservation of open space. You already said that, or expressed that this is more suitable in grows, or this whole objective is more suitable in grows than in the plays chapter. So we moved it to the grows chapter.
This is 1.5?
Yes.
1.5.6, he said.
1.5, objective 1.5. Patty?
Could you scroll?
Patty, got it. Right there. So that objective only had one policy in the former Parks Recreation Open Space, so we removed it. We just removed it from here, but the language still reads the same in Pasco grows.
So there's no duplication?
Correct. Policy plays 1.8.5 Public event spaces. This policy was in adapts.
1.8, he said.
Oh, okay, so thank you for noticing that it's not on this document. So since I sent out these, these documents on Sunday, I, we made other revisions after discussion with County Attorney's Office. And public event spaces was going to be in works. It's a policy that was in adapts. And you had asked us to remove it from adapts and put it in a different chapter that is more suitable for what the intent of the policy was or is. So we put it in Pasco plays. And I can read what the policy says. "Public event spaces. Pasco County shall foster cultural activities and strengthen community cohesion by encouraging developers to include publicly accessible event spaces within development projects." So that policy came from Pasco adapts, the sustainability section. That's right. It's, it makes sense to have it in place than in adapts.
Okay.
Okay, objective plays-
Hyatt, I'm sorry, for a second, can we go back to 1.1.6?
Sure.
I just have a quick question.
Okay.
So my question is, when this does get approved and adopted, is that gonna, it's always going to be in there and it's going to always consider amending it? You know what I mean? It'll be continually revised or consider amending it? I don't know if there's ever the other wording that we could put in there.
Well, I mean, we periodically update the comp plan, so if we ever get to the point where we're happy with it, we would take out amendment.
Okay, all right.
Which we do, there's other places in the comp plan where we've done just that, where we don't say amendment anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
When they're talking about amendment to the LDC.
This is one though that staff is working on amendments to, so I think they wanted to recognize that.
Okay.
Okay. Objective plays 1.9 Maintenance of infrastructure. You had recommended to add county to identify that we are referencing county parks, facilities, and equipment. Maintenance of-
It's 1.9.2?
Oh, because we added the 1.8.5, so yes. 1.9.2. And with that, we're done playing with place. What is it? Maintenance of infrastructure. Go up one more. Okay, no, go down then because the policy kind of shifted it. There you go, 1.10 then. It was, but we shifted the policies when we deleted that objective. I'll change it in the tracker.
You might, I just need to add some commas, I think. County parks, comma, facilities, comma. Some punctuation.
Mr. Bottles, did you, what are you commenting on?
Commas.
Just a comma between parks and facilities.
County parks, comma, facilities, comma, and equipment.
It's county parks, facilities, and equipment. We're referencing the infrastructure of the county parks.
They're not separate things.
Three different things, yeah, so you need the extra comma there between the-
She's saying it's, they're parks, facilities.
Oh, parks, facility.
Yes, and, and equipment, the whole infrastructure of the county parks.
They're not separate things.
So it's only referring to parks, facilities?
And equipment.
Since this is the plays chapter of the comp plan.
Got it. So as opposed to county parks, comma, facilities.
Right, I mean, it's not-
It's not all facilities.
It's not Keith Wiley's problem to maintain the government center on Little Road.
That's amazing, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Just changed.
I could barely maintain park facilities at this point in time. I did have a question, mostly to, probably to David Goldstein, specifically about neighborhood parks. Should we be, this is just a, again, a question, I don't know if it's appropriate, but should we be concerned about CDDs or HOAs that have neighborhood park requirements to ensure that they're providing adequate funding to make sure those facilities don't go into deferred maintenance and then are being requested, you know, the county's being requested to take those facilities over? So is that?
So you have requirements in your Land Development Code now that require those entities to maintain those parks.
Okay.
So I think you're protected by your Land Development Code already.
Okay, and that would be the place, though, we can, we can look at the LDC to make sure.
If you don't think those are adequate, then we can talk about it, but I-
Okay.
There, there's requirements that are ready.
I'm having like, you know, like looking into the future, like the golf course scenario where golf courses are created and then they're like, oh, hey, you want to buy a golf course, kind of situation. And I see community centers and things like that.
Yeah, we, it, I mean, they usually have to be plotted as separate tracts that the HOA or CDD has to maintain.
Right.
If they're not maintaining them, then that's probably an enforcement issue.
Right, which we could probably address in the LDC.
Right.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
So I think the reason I was confused on that is because of the title, this is maintenance of county infrastructure.
So it's, what should say county parks infrastructure?
Yes.
That's kind of where I was, I think it's-
I approve that edit, that's for sure.
So Hyatt, can we add the word parks after county in the title of 1.10? Put it high, Co. She get that? Can you add? And we're going back to plays real quick. In 1.10, if you could add the word parks after county.
We can do that.
In the title.
We can do that.
County parks infrastructure.
Okay, that'll bring us to the end of the Pasco plays review.
Okay.
So Hyatt's going to introduce now Pasco adapts.
You're right, that was fun.
From plays to adapts, that was fun. It was a fun chapter. Hopefully it'll be fun right now. I just want to note that this chapter, since circulation, has been revised based on conversations with Mr. Goldstein. So I will show two versions, the one that I had sent out on Sunday, November 2nd, and then the one that we had edited just yesterday. So we'll start with the version that you have. Mr. Muntz, you missed the part when I said that we removed insure from the chapters.
Under you would.
Thank you. All right, so insure is gone from the introductions and from some of the policies. Starting with policy 1.1.4, we removed insure and replaced it with support. And we just rewrote the policy for more clarity. Policy adapts 1.1.9 Development incentives. We deleted, you had asked us to just reword, there was a lot of discussion about this policy. Parks, Natural Resources, and Recreation Department had just recommended we delete this policy because the wetlands would be protected and incentivized through existing regulations anyway. So-
It's covered in Conserves.
Correct. Are we okay with-
And that's where you deal with, Conserves is where we deal with tree canopies and things like that.
Well, it would probably, the tree canopy regulations that are underway, that we're talking about in public hearings, would draw their legitimacy, their authority, from the Conserves chapter. But the Conserves chapter isn't specifically talking about tree, specific tree regulation. That'll happen in the Land Development Code.
Okay. Thanks, Terry.
Policy adapts 1.1.11 Limits on artificial waterways. You suggested to delete this policy, and we did that since the policy is already being regulated through the LUC. 1.1.12 You asked us to remove categorized, the word categorized, and we removed that. 1.1.13 Discourage shoreline uses. You had concern with implying that critical public facility is vulnerable, and you suggested the addition of the uses that could contribute to environmental degradation. So we just pretty much ended this sentence at degradation, degradation, why can't I say that word? For Mr. Goldstein's suggestion. 1.1.13. Oh, and we added if impacted. Makes sense?
Right.
Okay. Policy adapt 2.1.1 Evacuation Level of Service. You asked us to make it clear that the level of service listed in this policy is for the year 2025 as identified in the Tampa Bay study, so we added for the year 2025.
If you had to-
I don't think you need commas there.
I guess that is kind of the comment, but I have a follow-up question.
For 2.1.2?
2.1.1.
Okay.
I know you made change to 1.2, but-
Okay.
So will this change in 2026? For 2027 or 2028, or, or, I mean?
So the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council does their study about every five years. So we should be good through 2030.
So there would be no need to, so this will be good until whenever we update the comp plan again?
Most likely, yes, sir, unless there's a drastic change.
I think that's why we wanted to specify what year it was.
Right, the main reason I was asking is because there's a policy 2.1.9 which requires developers to show that they meet this level of service.
Yes, sir.
And so my, the question I was going to ask is, if they're doing that in the year 2029, are they allowed to use this level of service from 2025?
Yes, sir. Because it's done once every five years.
Okay, that answers my question. So I'll trust that if it, 2030 comes along, that somebody will tell-
Absolutely.
Planning that it needs to change and that somebody will update the comp plan?
We do our ear every five to seven years anyway, so that's around the time we will be doing our appraisal.
Could you just reference the most recent TRC?
I mean, that's, that's what I thought we were going to do, was just reference the most recent study as opposed, but and just make it self-amending, but that was, that's what I thought we were going to do, but if you're going to update it every five years, I guess you could do that too. The only reason I'm a little concerned is last time we did the year, all we did was send a letter. We didn't actually update the comp plan.
Because we were doing this update. That's why.
I know, but we have not really updated it every five years.
No, we have not been doing that.
Okay, so that's part of my concern. If somebody's really gonna update our, this policy every five years, I'm not as concerned.
Okay.
But.
How about if we add, instead of for the year 2025, we can say, like, we say in 2.1, 2.1.2, as determined in the Tampa Bay Region Hurricane evacuation study.
Well, then you would just say the level of service i- is, is, is the one that's in the study.
Right.
In the most recent study. Instead of saying it's 38 hours for in-counting and 38 hours for out-of-counting, you would say it's the most recent
Okay.
level of service established by that study.
Quite the most recent.
You could say through the year 2029.
Uh, maybe we can.
Well, they're saying it could potentially change if something drastic happens in the middle, so they could do a study in between.
But if you say it's the most recent one.
Right.
Then you don't have to ever amend your comp plan. You're just saying, I mean, I guess I'm asking, are you okay with using whatever the most recent one is?
Absolutely. So, so maybe.
Then, then I think we should just say it's the most, whatever the most recent one established was.
Legislature could shove a statute down your throat and throw him a chief for amending your comp plan.
Yes.
So.
Yes, that could happen.
So the preference is to keep the number of hours.
No, I'm saying don't keep the number of hours in the comp plan. I'm saying you, you actually say that your level of service is the
As the term of the.
Is the most, is, is the most recent.
I, I think, well.
In-county and out-of-county evacuation time established by the Tampa Bay Region Hurricane evacuation study.
We have to identify the level of service.
So what, what I was gonna offer, since the preference from emergency management is to maintain a standard in the comprehensive plan, um, that we might say the level of, I think this is the reason why we added for the year 2025, but to the point about using the most recent, we could say the level of service for hurricane evacuation for the year 2025 is 38 hours for in-counting and 30 hours for out-of-county evacuation, or as amended from time to time, or use the most recent study. Um, we can add that.
I guess you could say as may be amended by the most recent.
Yeah.
Tampa Bay Region Hurricane evacuation study.
You could flip it too, Terry. You could just say, you know, as, as according to the most recent study, and then for reference, the 2025 level of service is, you could do that.
Okay, can I, oh, okay, as reference? Can I just direct your attention to the, to your screens? So remember when I said that we have made a couple edits since the last time I sent that document? So we have added as determined in Tampa Bay Regional.
I know, but that's what I, that's the edit that Mr. Pommings and I were, were talking about.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think we're talking about as determined by the most recent.
What he's trying to do is leave it open, that it can be amended in the future and that you don't have to come back and change.
I think, yeah, I think you should say as may be amended by the, instead of saying as determined and.
Yes, that's the, that's the language I wrote on, as may amended by the most recent Tampa Bay Regional, Tampa Bay Region Hurricane evacuation study. Yes. Instead of as determined.
Most recent.
But, but that, you probably need to move that for category for storm event earlier in the sentence. Sort of reads right.
Okay.
Oh, so, okay, yeah.
Yeah, the as amended part should be at the very end.
Okay. Or maybe, or maybe right here?
Or periodically amended.
Maybe amended to be in the last sentence?
Yeah, that's what he's saying.
Okay, we got that one?
Yeah.
Cause you're saying you have to specify the number of hours as requirement.
Okay. Okay, so 2.1.2, what you, what you got on, in the package is not what's on the screen because this edit was made just yesterday. And Mr. Goldstein, are you?
I'm fine with 2.1.2.
Okay.
This, this policy is not regulatory, just so we're clear. This is not our goal to level the services, this is just, says we're gonna work through this.
Something that, yeah, we're striving to do.
Yes. And it's a regional goal, it's not a county goal.
Correct. And all the counties have the same policy in their complans, by the way, the neighboring counties. Good. Mr. Grayman, okay. Uh, po- policy adapt 2.1.3, evacuemobilization program. You recommended to add through other available technology. We rephrased the policy. We, we did add that, but we just rephrased it to make sense.
That's good.
Okay. Policy adapt 2.1.7, shelter capacity. You asked us to call out the LDC section 1103 if the mitigation fee ordinance is to be mentioned in this policy. What we did, we reverted to the original policy language, which does not reference the ordinance, and we did not call out the LDC section in case the numbering of the sections in the LDC does change after we update the LDC in the next year or two. So we tried to keep the LDC numbers out of the comp plan because we don't want to go back and amend the comp plan if the sections do change. Policy adapt 2.1.9, adopted hurricane evacuation level of service analysis. You asked us to cite the statute and say that we have to be in compliance with the statute and get rid of that last sentence and simply end it after the statutes and make it clear that we have to comply, so, uh, because we do more than the statute anyway, so we did do that.
Okay.
2.1.10, mitigation. Again, you asked us to reference the LDC section number 1103. We, uh, just decided not to include the section number, like I said, in case the section numbers do change, but we just added that we need to be consistent with the LDC requirement, whatever that section is gonna be in the future. Policy adapt 2.2.2, priorities for natural disaster cleanup. You asked us to remove implement any executive orders and simply add as may be modified pursuant to state law to the end, and we did that.
Which includes executive orders.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Policy adapt 2.3.1, coastal high hazard area map. We removed the last sentence as it was redundant with policy adapt 2.1.9. And we added in areas, so the policy was a little bit confusing, um, to one of our, um, planners, private, external planners. Ms. Cynthia mentioned that there is a little bit of confusion about this map when it comes to the LDC, the Florida Building Code and the comp plan definitions of the coastal high hazard area. So for the third bullet point, apply Florida Building Code requirements, we added in areas designated as velocity zones by FEMA. Just to make it clear that we are following the definition of the coastal high hazard as, as it is in, um, in the statutes in chapter 163.
Okay.
Okay. 2.3.4, coastal high hazard area infrastructure limitation. You suggested to delete and just combine it with 2.3.7, and we deleted it and combined it with the following policy, 2.3.7. Limit expenditure, right there.
Okay.
Policy adapt 2.3.6, coastal high hazard area development limitation. You asked us to add the section number of the LDC, which again is still the same section, 1103. Uh, we rephrased this policy. We, we moved D through G from this policy and we added it to the coastal lands flu description.
This was a lengthy discussion at the, at the workshop that, um, reviewed this chapter and the consensus was let's take it out of it as a policy and just make it native to the coastal lands flu, the CL flu, future land use.
Okay.
I mentioned, because it was attempting to look at density and intensity of land use or coastal land use, so that was the reason why it was shifted.
All right, thanks, Terry.
2.3, next is 2.3.8. So this policy was not, um, well, this number of policy was not in, discussed last time we had the workshop about adapts. So we decided to break the policy, to break 2.3.7 into two policies because it was essentially saying two different things and just have, um, a separate policy about the infrastructure restriction in coastal areas. So this is again, existing polish, policy in the comp plan. We just separated it from the other policy that didn't make sense to combine them.
Okay.
All right, now we're gonna move to the resilience and sustainability goal, which is goal three. We're gonna go to policy adapts 3.1.4. Floodproofing of sanitary sewer, oh, and also policy adapt 3.1.5, floodproofing for non-residential building. You had recommended to remove these policies from here, from the adapts element or adapts chapter and, um, put it maybe in the serves chapter. So we, we did that. All right, policy adapt 3.1.6, floodproofing for vertical mixed-use development. You asked us to remove vertical mixed-use with multi-story, non-residential, and you had asked us to remove introduced middle housing. We removed middle housing, introduced middle housing from this policy, and we did exactly what you had, um, suggested us to do. But when you read this policy, and I'll give you a chance to read it, comprehend it a little bit, it it just does not hold to the intent of what we were trying to do with this policy from the get-go.
So if we, if we read the policy as it, as, as the edits were suggested, Pasco County shall promote multi-story, non-residential developments with floodproofed. Um, I think the, the, the text also included, uh, habitable ground floors. Um, excluding parking garages to enhance efficient land use, increase economic value, and reduce recovery times from flooding events. And the word habitable was causing, um, some conflict within, within the, uh, policy statement because the title was changed from mixed-use to residential, mixed-use residential to multi-story, non-residential. Or excuse me, mixed-use development to multi-story, non-residential. Uh, this policy language originally came from the Resilience Sustainability Action Plan and the intent of the, of the Resilience Sustainability Action Plan was to enhance the protection of residential properties through the floodproofing of the commercial ground floors in vertical mixed-use developments. So that, the RSAP was targeting mixed-use developments specifically. Um, this action item also supports the economic resilience since the floodproofed commercial space will incur less damage and will be able to reopen sooner than after a flooding event. And it was mentioned, um, at the, at the workshop, how residential first floors were not mandated to be floodproofed, uh, in the same way or at all, um, as compared to commercial, uh, ground floor scenarios. So I think the initial policy was reaching for that, it was reaching for floodproofing the commercial ground floor. And I think the, the revisions that we talked about at the last meeting maybe merit a second look so that we can maybe refine this a little, a little better.
Well, Terry, can I ask just a general question? Cause I, I don't. If the goal is to enhance efficient land use, increase economic value, couldn't you argue that any multi-story building does that? I mean, I, I guess I'm trying to figure out is, why did we limit it to vertical mixed-use or non-residential? I mean, shouldn't we be encouraging all multi-story buildings? I, I'm just throwing it out. I mean, I don't, maybe I'm, if it's a bad comment, I don't, but I mean, don't all multi-story buildings create efficient land use and increase economic value?
They can, yes. Yeah. Especially if they're well maintained and not blighted. Uh, but yes, you're right.
Well, and I think that partly the way it's written is I think the, from what I'm hearing, the intent is to promote the floodproofing of ground floors and multi-story, non-residential, not necessarily promote developments with, like, we want the floodproofing on those types of developments is what we're saying, right?
Yeah, we want to, basically we want to floodproof that ground floor. But if it's a, if it's a, if it's a first-floor residence, however, um, that could be a challenge.
Try to clarify that, there's some confusion. So if we were developing a multi-story building in a floodplain, the FEMA rules do not allow you to floodproof a residential structure. Residences have to be elevated to one foot above the base flood elevation. Commercial occupancies can be floodproofed to one foot above the base flood elevation. So I'm trying to figure out a better term rather than multi, I, I think I'm with David.
Do, do we just say floodproofing for multi-story developments? Instead of adding the qualifier, non-residential or mixed-use?
Well, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is, don't, aren't we trying to encourage, if it's all residential, we want that first floor to basically be not habitable.
I think what you should, what you're trying to say is that you want to promote floodproofing of the ground floors in vertical mixed-use developments rather than elevating the ground floors because you want, you want to have this walkable shopping area, right? You got retail in the bottom of this mixed-use. But what you're trying to promote is that when we have vertical mixed-use, that, that the ground floor, the retail portion of that be floodproofed rather than elevated.
Exactly, yeah.
I think that just needs some rewording to better communicate your idea.
But you said the, the key words, Mr. Moody, vertical mixed-use. So initially we had vertical mixed-use, but you expressed multi-story, non-residential makes sense. Yeah, during the dialogue we had last time. So if we revert back to what we had, so Pasco County shall promote vertical mixed-use development.
What, to, to his point, it's you're promoting the floodproofing of the ground floors. It's, this, the adapts policy is not what we're trying to promote vertical mixed-use. What you're trying to promote is floodproofing the ground floor of a vertical mixed-use development.
Okay.
So that you can have a walkable street, streetscape.
Got it. Pasco County shall promote floodproofed ground floor within mixed, vertical mixed-use.
For vertical mixed-use development.
But I guess, I'm gonna play devil's advocate, if you had a, wouldn't that be true of a two-story office building too?
Yes.
Why does it have to be mixed use?
Okay, so then you could add the word or multi-story, non-resident, and multi-story, non-residential?
We're back to...
With a commercial building, can you floodproof a commercial building?
And this is what I'm saying is it, I think the statement should be true of any, any non-residential first floor building.
So you could say the ground floors of commercial industrial mixed use development?
So what about, what about this, that you will promote the floodproofing of the ground floors for non-residential uses in multi-story buildings? You can't floodproof for residential uses, you can only floodproof for non-residential uses.
Yeah, because the residential uses require like high, high windows.
Yes, the residential use, the floor of a residential use is required to be one foot above the base flood elevation, but for a non-residential use, to David's point, it could be an office, it could be a restaurant, it could be a retail establishment, those can be floodproofed up to one, so.
Yeah, I can see that.
So you're promoting the floodproofing of ground floors for non-residential uses in multi-story buildings.
Yes, I think that, that hits it on the head.
Just, yes. Small, so are you saying we want to promote, we do want to promote those floodproofed, non-residential uses on ground floors of the multi-story?
Yes.
Hey, I think that's what I'm hearing you say is, but to John's point is they want, they don't want people to have to go up really high to go shopping or to the office building.
Right, you don't want to climb stairs or go up an elevator to go to a shopping opportunity.
So does Pasco County shall promote floodproofed, non-residential ground floors?
Of multi-story buildings.
Of multi-story developments?
Excluding parking garages, I don't think we need to.
Cause you don't have to floodproof a parking garage, that's correct.
I, we can, we can.
But don't park your Tesla in there.
Yeah, right. Or charging stations. We could write a land development code on it, anyway. Okay, we can work with, I think we can work with that definition, that solves the discrepancy, so we'll fix that.
Just a quick question, what do we mean by floodproofed?
So, in the context of a non-residential use, one can, for instance, build the walls out of concrete that has been sealed so that water can't penetrate the walls. When you floodproof a building, you, you design in flood shields for the doors and windows that can be installed quickly if a hurricane is coming. There's a lot of other requirements that go with floodproofing although we.
Yeah, I get the idea, but just basically to keep the water out.
The cost they're actually doing is not very feasible, but.
But it's just basically to keep the water out?
Yes.
Simplest form, okay, thank you.
But maybe we should add floodproofing for the glossary, oh it isn't a glossary.
It is, okay, alright.
Is that a new definition or existing?
It's a new definition, yes.
Okay, so it's a new definition for floodproofing, not in the current comprehensive plan, but which was presented at the previous session. Which is why it's not in red here today.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, but you should speak to the building official about floodproofing. It references certain AS, the FEMA, FEMA regulations reference certain ASCE documents that are what, what constitute floodproofing and I would tell you that I don't know of any non-structural additions that constitute floodproofing.
Weren't you talking about shields that can be installed? That's not structural.
Yeah, but they are and they have to be designed to withstand hydrostatic pressure and flood and.
Doesn't FEMA have a definition?
That's it.
Yes, that's what, that is FEMA's, okay.
Yeah, so that was in the RSAP that got brought into the, this definition, this glossary.
It's worth the word, yeah.
Cause they also have those barriers and.
So, just, just to come full circle on this discussion then, going back to three point one point two, should that say, to elevate residential structures? Cause we just talked about we don't want to elevate the non-residential.
Two, two, one, two.
That would make sense to me.
Yeah, sounds like we really want to incentivize the residential structures to be elevated.
Yeah, yeah, so the, so, so change the title for policy adapts three dot one dot two to elevation of residential structures.
Yep, and also add residential in the.
In the policy, yeah.
Yeah, it counts itself, yeah.
To elevate residential, got it.
Alright, next.
Next, so floodproofing, we're done with that. Policy adapts three point one point eleven, post-disaster redevelopment plan. You asked us to add non-regulatory and remove and eliminate, so it was a couple addition or additions to show that the post-disaster redevelopment plan is not a regulatory document. Policy adapts three point two point eight food assessment, you asked us to remove equitable, we did that. And we moved past policy adapts three point two point eleven inland ports to Pasco Works. And like I just mentioned, policy adapt three point two point twelve was that public event spaces, that is now Pasco Place one point eight point five, that we went over just a few minutes ago. And that's all we wrote for Pasco Adapts.
Alright.
You ready to keep working?
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna go to Pasco Works.
Alright.
That was not funny, I need to work on my segues.
Been hanging around David too much.
That's right.
Yeah, learn from the best. Pasco Works, unfortunately, Mr. Bill Cronin could not be with us today, he had other engagement, but we were able to work with his team on a lot of the policies that you recommended as too. So hopefully we had captured all of your feedback and comments on Pasco Works. So let's start with Mr. Mont's intro, we moved ensure. I don't mean to call you out, but it's just.
I'm fine with it, as long as it's gone, I don't care who you call out.
Okay, Policy Works one point one point one, preservation of key employment location. You asked us to add public use airports to the list and we did just that. Policy Works one point five point three, limitation on the conversion of employment locations. Preservation of key, one one one. Go up one more please.
I think it's for one point five point one?
The preservation of key employment locations, one point five point one.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. Yeah. So we added public use airport, sorry about that. Again, where's my coffee? Okay, so let's go to one point five point three. This one is Terry's baby.
So in the initial discussions for Policy Works one five three, the LPA commented that we should list out the land uses that we want to preserve and not want to be converted essentially to residential uses. And we had a lengthy discussion internally about, you know, which, it started off with which future land uses should be part of this policy and how we list them out. Then it turned into we should include the zoning districts too and we debated what that would mean in the long run. It took a little bit of time, so I'm not gonna go through all of that debate. What we finally landed on was to not mention the future land uses or the zoning districts, but rather to focus on employment generating land uses specifically. Now, that's a very contextual term because you can have employment generating land uses locate in a number of future land use categories and also in a number of zoning districts. For example, you can have the EC employment center, future land use, which could have lots of office development built into it. You could have IL, which could also have office development built into it, but you could also have COM, commercial, or ROR. The O in ROR, by the way, is for office. Traditionally, we haven't really considered COM and ROR as our mainstay employment generating future land use categories. Those have usually been IL, EC, office, OF. And so we've really, we've really thought about those and we preserve those at all costs and we work to develop more projects that are in the IL flu and the, in the, or have, when we have PDs to make sure that we establish the mandated, you know, employment generating square footage of whatever the land uses that they're proposing. And another example is in the C2 zoning district, you also have the ability to build office. So is C2 zoning less important than I1 zoning? In many ways, C2 is, it's mainly there for the retail shops and the what have you and the IL is there for the factory jobs and, and those types of employment generators. But in both zoning districts, you can actually see employment generating uses play out. So we didn't want to prioritize some districts over others, rather we wanted to make the policy more broad so that we can discern on a case-by-case basis the importance of an employment generating land use on a particular site. How this plays out, how this has played out in public hearings before this body, are certain discussions when we come to C2 land or zoning where the C2 use allows for office, it allows for retail, it allows for the typical commercial stuff, but it also allows for multifamily as a conditional use. And then we've had discussions about, well, how do we preserve the commercial, the employment generating potential of the site without it, without abandoning it totally to a multifamily project when it's on such limited frontage as state 54 or state 52 or wherever. So we have those kinds of conversations continually. So if we, if we were to list out the future land use and the zoning districts in this policy, we might be hamstringing those conversations later on down the road when we're actually talking about specific projects and specific sites. Additionally, we do have situations in the county where there's just maybe been too much land designated in a particular future land use. We have one that was currently working through the process where indeed the arterial frontages have all been approved and developed for commercial development under the COM flu and there's quite a bit of hinterland, so to speak, away from the frontage and not visible from any of the arterials that is leftover of COM. That's likely not to develop as anything, maybe potentially as multifamily. And so the question becomes if we were to list these out, we'd be freezing those types of property owners and those types of projects from being able to convert to another type of land use. What I think practically this has played out among the policy discussions that have occurred in the past is that when we look at employment generating land use, we're looking at them in three specific tiers. We're looking at them in terms of industrial and then in terms of commercial and then in terms of mixed use. So like industrial to residential is a big no-no, we don't want to convert that. Industrial to commercial, we prefer the industrial, but sometimes the commercial has merit associated with it. Commercial to residential, we typically have heartburn over that, we don't really like to see that kind of conversion, we try to preserve whatever commercial we can, we can retain, but on occasion, the residential kind of makes sense. Mixed use to pure residential has typically been something that nobody has back because in a mixed use scenario, you have the residential potential already there, let's keep the commercial. That's kind of been the logic that's been playing out over the last so many years. So those are the three areas, so to speak, that we, that we tend to focus on and we think that the language, this policy will continue to enable us to have that kind of fruitful conversation at the planning commission, local planning agency meetings without unnecessarily hamstringing us by listing out a future land use category or a zoning district specifically in this policy.
So Terry, I certainly don't have any problem with you not listing the specific flues and rezoning districts. My only slight concern is, I think there's another policy earlier, and we probably need to scroll up, that when it, it talks about employment generating land uses, that A I F right there, it talks about, it's one point five point one, it talks about employment generating uses, it says including target businesses, office development and industrial development. So my concern is that appears to be fairly narrow and what you just described is a little broader, cause you're saying it may include things like mixed use and commercial. And so my concern about you leaving it undefined is that somebody's gonna argue, well, if it's undefined, then you have to revert to one point five point one to mean has, what defines an employment generating use and that it's only target businesses, office development, industrial development. So I guess my problem is, it's not, I don't have a problem with you not defining the flu categories in the zoning districts, my bigger issue is that you haven't defined what an employment generating use is and if it's undefined, I'm worried that it's, it's gonna be in the eye of the beholder or just.
So he says it includes target businesses, it doesn't say it is only target businesses.
Well, but, but I, I could see creative attorneys arguing, well, that that was the intent of the board was that it was only supposed to be target businesses, office development, industrial because.
Including but not limited to.
Yeah, but not limited to.
Well, but I, but they may, I don't know, but I mean, I guess, I'm also a little bit worried Terry because.
Which may include?
Because, well, I agree with a lot of what you've just said, what happens when you're not here ten years from, I mean, the COM, you know, the COM plan, you know.
Have to write a diary.
I mean.
Are you, are you leaving?
I mean, I, I mean, can we not include a definition of employment generating uses so that, that, I support, I get, I support everything you're saying about why it's not a good idea to include the flu categories in zoning districts, cause I understand that you need to have some flexibility there and we have PDs and that make it very difficult. But it seems to me there should be a general definition about what we consider to be an employment generating use.
Sure, so we have been.
Cause otherwise I think it's gonna, I can see somebody saying, well, it's only these things.
Yeah. I mean, when I look at Policy Works one five one, I'm thinking the traditional sort of understanding, Pasco planning understanding that along these specific corridors, we'd like to see specifically the target businesses, office and industrial, but if other things happen like commercial, typical retail like state 54, it's possible. We have been working internally on a definition for employment generating land use, but I can, I can let Mr. Engel speak to, to an idea for employment generating, but we've been working on it.
Good morning, David Engel here. I would just propose this definition, just for discussion purposes. Employment generating uses refer to types of land use or development activities specifically intended to create jobs, support economic growth and provide workplaces within a community or region. These uses are commonly, well, I just wanted to let you know they're. These uses are commonly, well, I just want to let you know that's the definition in urban planning. Want me to read it again, or is everybody?
It's good.
Yeah, I, look, this is a policy issue more than, I don't want to take a trip waiting in the policy issue. My main issue is that I want it to be clear. I don't want somebody, if our intent is that we're going to include retail jobs, I'm okay with that, okay? I just, I don't want somebody to argue that, oh, there was never an intent to include retail jobs because we didn't define it and therefore, you know, we only meant target industries or we only meant industrial jobs.
Well, I think that the definition I just proposed really casts a broad net. And it is also at the level that a COM plan should be at, not a zoning ordinance.
Who's is that?
So this definition would be subordinate to what David just read, which is more broader. This one was a very early idea of what employment generating uses can be. It's not fully vetted, it's not fully developed as an idea, but I did mention that we've been working on an employment generating use. This is basically, again, it could be subordinate to what David just read. But there are some things in here that I think we probably need to adjust and tweak before we bring it to you guys for further, to the commission, apologize, for further scrubbing and vetting. But it gives you a sense of what we're thinking about.
Yeah, and there's, look, there's gray areas too that I see maybe not covered here, like is a school an employment generating use?
Right, or hospitals.
Is an assisted living facility an employment generating use? You know, I, this is why, I just don't want, I don't want to be the one that makes this decision. I just don't want to have fights in the future about what an employment generating use is. That's my only fear about, I don't want this to be like obscenity, okay? I know it when I see it, okay? I don't want to have those kind of fights for the next 10 years about what an employment generating use is. I just want some clarity in our COM plan about what an employment generating use is. So if we can define it, please, that's all I'm asking.
All right, we're going to huddle and this is a serious topic and we'll come back with a recommendation. Thank you.
But make sure that when you do that, you leave room for it to grow and evolve. So, well, so for instance, if it was 100 years ago, growing cotton might be considered to be an employment generating use because you had to have people pick the cotton, run the cotton gins to get the seeds out, and then process the cotton into thread and weave cloth. It may not be so much of an employment generating use today as in the context that we're talking about it. But what I'm saying is leave room for that definition to expand tomorrow. We don't know what technology is going to bring us. You know, we're on the verge of an AI revolution. There's things we haven't thought of or contemplated yet that we don't want to, we don't want to lock ourselves out of when they present those opportunities.
Want to make sure they're human employment generating.
Well, and, and, and the other thing is that the corollary to this is you probably need to include your definition of what is not an employment generating use. Let me explain why. Because now that the legislature has basically said that we have to allow home-based businesses, and we have no idea when a home-based business is or is not going to show up, and now is every residential use home now an employment generating use? And so, you know, that's what I'm saying. You need to be very clear about what is, what is not an employment generating use too.
So we'll work on that, but in terms of the language for Policy Works one five three?
I'm okay with your wording, but you need to define employment generating use.
Will do. Sounds good.
And if you define it, then I think maybe you need to look at taking it out of that, and then one point five point one, I don't know if you wanted in the SAGE.
Yeah, one five one.
Which you put in one point five point one, because you have.
So before, we mentioned employment.
Yes.
Yep. Gotcha.
Is that something we should define in the land development plan? Is it easier to update?
Um, I don't, I think they need a definition in the COM plan, if it's implementing a COM plan policy.
Okay. Going back to our goals, objectives, and policies. Policy Works one point five point six, the inland ports that came from Pasco adapts, which we just talked about. Policy Works one point five point seven, utility coordination. You asked us to add a policy similar to Policy one point five point six, which is about coordinating of transportation, infrastructure. You want us to do something similar with utility coordination, with coordination with utility providers, excuse me, to facilitate the delivery of public utilities to employment locations. So we added Policy Works one point five point seven. It reads similar to one point five. I'm sorry, we added one point five point eight, which reads similar to one point five point seven. The numbers change when we add new policies. So hopefully that's not too confusing. We, are we good with how the utility coordination, the new policy reads?
Yeah.
I see nods. Okay, thank you. Policy Works one point six point two, urban infill and redevelopment of the US 19 corridor. You asked us to add developed land development regulations pursuant to the harbors plan. We revised the language to include developing land, develop land development regulations pursuant to the harbors plans and to promote infill redevelopment activities within the US 19 corridors.
I just have a question on that US 19 corridor. Does it include, because you're thinking, I'm thinking about the flooding and all that stuff, so.
Okay.
When that's done, it'll have that thought about, that the west side of 19 is completely different from the east side. Just to look at all the coastal high hazard area, just that that's thought about as it's done?
I think that's inherent to the redevelopment plan itself.
Okay.
Okay, let's go all the way down to the glossary or the proposed definitions. Okay, so we had lengthy discussions about the definitions of primary industry and target industries. So what we decided to do is, we already had target industry definition in the existing comprehensive plan or the current comprehensive plan. What we did, we just changed few wording which don't apply anymore. For example, target industry includes businesses identified by the state, because Enterprise Florida is qualified. Enterprise Florida no longer exists, it's now Select Florida. So we, since they keep changing names, we just decided to keep it broad and just, you know, say state. And those listed in the local economic development organization's economic development target industry list. So this list does change. They, PADC, which is our now local economic development organization, they do take the the target industries from the state list, but they keep tweaking it as if it's our county. So that's how we are deferring the definition of the target industry. So it's not too confusing, it's not too specific, and it's not too limiting. The primary industry is also, has also been tweaked to make it more broad and not too specific. So, primary industry is defined as local businesses that receive a majority of their revenue from the production of goods and or services sold to consumers outside of Pasco County. Do these definitions work?
Yeah, looks good. And then we change it to organization from council. So just in case there's a change in the future.
Okay, correct.
Okay.
That includes Pasco Works.
Okay.
Next. Last but not least, Pasco Partners.
Should have started with this one, the last one.
Yeah. The easier, we kind of wanted to start with the hard ones, just in case there's a lengthy discussion.
Let's partner together to finish this.
Yeah, because there was not much, that's why.
Well, you have anything around, David.
Okay, continue the plan.
Just a reminder, this chapter is supposed to have two elements, two existing elements, the intergovernmental coordination element and the school facilities element. But we decided not to go over the GOPs or the goals, objectives, and policies of the public schools element since we are working with the school district to update the interlocal agreement. So that will be, come in to you very soon, hopefully.
Richard, you don't have it done yet?
Yeah, that's all on you.
Slacker. Expected that to be, he's been sitting here all night. How can you finish?
I can throw Chris into the bus since he's not here. We're working together diligently.
Yes. So we'll just go over the edits that we made as part of the intergovernmental coordination portion or section of this chapter. First things first, ensure was changed to establish Policy Partners one one eight, coordination of roadway funding and maintenance. You asked us to remove the last sentence. And we did. Policy Partners one one fourteen, coordination of emergency management plans with municipalities. You asked us to add adjacent local governments to the title. So we removed with municipalities and to make the title, not to make the title too long with that addition. And we also asked us to remove counties from that policy and just, like I said, replace it with local government, so we did that. And that was all the feedback that we got for this chapter, so it was an easy peasy one. Until public schools come.
That's right.
Yes. Because Richard's slacking on the right.
Maybe that's why Chris isn't here.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Didn't want to take a meeting.
There would have been more discussion if the schools went in and gone.
Yeah.
So that completes the presentations for the follow-ups of the chapters that we discussed today. The next set of workshops are going to talk about Pasco serves, Pasco invests, and hopefully the other half of Pasco partners here. Also, as we mentioned, Pasco lives, was previously reviewed. There's some updates being worked on for that chapter, and so we'll be bringing that up in an upcoming workshop as well. Meanwhile, just as a general update in terms of project progress, the Pasco moves chapter, which is the transportation element, is now moving to stakeholder feedback. A round of stakeholder feedback before it gets put together again and brought before this body. And Pasco grows has moved to, yeah, has moved to legal review at this point with the county attorney's office. So that'll be, once that's done there, it'll go out for stakeholder feedback for a round of that, and then we bring it to the local planning agency as well. As mentioned at the previous workshop sessions, Pasco 2050 originally was scheduled for adoption in December of 2025 with state statutes and various debates at the state legislature currently underway. Statutes that were passed and put into law, of course, and then current legislative session. The target for adoption has moved to the springtime, so March, April. So we have a little bit of time to get through moves and grows in a comfortable manner.
Okay, that's good.
And that'll conclude our presentation.
All right, well done. Good job.
Good work.
You.
Thank you, Plankton partners. Hope you have a great rest of your day.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we can adjourn the line.
The workshop's adjourned. Workshop is adjourned, yes.
That's what I'm saying, man.
Yeah, you just reconvene at 1:30 if you're on the line.
All right.
Danger gal.
Or adjourn.
You got me.
1:30.
I was left-handed too.
In today's world, many of our youth and young adults have no clue what they want to do in life. We're helping them to change lives because we're teaching the technical, hands-on skills that they need to launch a career in advanced manufacturing. It's unbelievable to see the smiles as they start a career in manufacturing and truly helping the manufacturer fill voids that they need in the industry.
A portion of the county's longstanding penny for Pasco sales tax finances the jobs and economic opportunities trust fund. This $60 million fund provides financing alternatives for job-ready sites, spec industrial, and Class A office, and infrastructure needs for our local targeted industries, allowing companies to develop at the speed of business.
Pasco County was instrumental in providing us information for our relocation. Since we've been here, we've probably seen the industrial area around us grow to triple in size, and the surrounding community probably grow just as much, so we see a lot of future growth in this area and look forward to being a part of it.
Why did we stay or come here and invest here? Well, it was very simple, because Pasco County, the local government, was very, very supportive of all our plans, very responsive. That's the first reason. The second reason is we have great people here in Pasco County. And though therefore, we look very much forward into a bright future.